All right, ladies and gentlemen, welcome Woodbury to the village board meeting on March 25th, 2023. Will everyone please rise with the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence for all those men and women who gave their lives for our freedoms during the upcoming Memorial Day?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. All right, before we go any further, I'd like to start by introducing a full board present here tonight, starting with our end parish trustee, Kristi Graziano. Next to him is trustee Dick Perrell. Next to him is trustee Susan Suriello. Next to her is deputy mayor Tara Hirsch. Next to me on my right is village clerk, Desiree Toddman, and of course, it is I, the mayor. So, we're gonna jump right in. Senator, sing. We're gonna jump right in to our first public hearing. Uh, Mia, can I help on pronouncing that right?
Yes.
Okay. Public hearing is being held and taking public comments on request for relief from Local Law 5 of 2022, continuing moratorium on issuance of certain permits, certificates of occupancy, and approvals for property located at 10 Gregory Lane. Public notice was printed in time to our record on May 18, 2023, and to date, we have received no written comments. Is anyone here the advocate? Go right to the podium, introduce yourself.
Okay, I'm Alphonse Mia. I'm the advocate for 10 Gregory Lane.
Talk to us.
Um, yeah, basically, I'm trying to add a small addition to the side of my house for my two parents who are elderly. My father's 89, my mother's 76. And basically, their current living condition is just changing with their age, and I just want them to be a little bit closer to me so I can keep an eye on them and, you know, take care of them a little bit.
All right. Kelly, did we receive anything from H2M on this?
Uh, no, it wasn't referred to that.
It wasn't referred to that, okay. All right, um, I really don't have a lot of questions for you, because I think you explained that it's for your parents, they're currently living with you?
They're living with my sister. My sister's selling her house downsizing, so they want to come with me.
Okay. All right, going out to the board, anyone from the board, starting at the far end, CJ, trustee Graziano?
I can't see this really resulting in a huge increase in work use, to be honest with you, for two elderly people.
You're gonna have to... Talk louder.
Oh, I don't see... You're the first person to ever ask me to talk louder. I don't see the issue with this one, is I don't see two elderly people using more than 220 gallons per day. You know, your average is generally around 100, 120 gallons per day for a person, anyway, for normal usage, so I don't foresee this as being an issue.
Okay. Uh, trustee Perrell?
Yeah, I don't really have issues with this either. We're just gonna make it easier for your parents, who have their own living quarters and separate...
Right.
Do their own thing.
Right.
So, yeah, I don't see any issues with this at all.
All right, Susan Suriello, do you have anything to add?
Will this, will you have a kitchen in this area?
Yes, they'll have their own little kitchenette area.
I mean, I don't have any issues with it. I think it's a great thing, so I think water usage will not be significant. I need to take care of my mom and dad.
Good.
Uh, trustee Mia? Okay, so I think we're all in agreement. So, does anyone from the public? Thank you, Mr. Mia. You can have a seat. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this application? Going once, going twice. All right, can I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing?
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and hearing the board's comments, can I now have a motion and a second to approve the waiver request for 10 Gregory Lane?
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Mia. We're off to the races.
Thank you.
All right.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome. All right, moving right along, we have a second public hearing, a moratorium waiver request for Ross. Public hearing is being held and taking public comments on a request for relief from Local Law 5 of 2022, continuing moratorium on issuance of certain permits, certificates of occupancy, and approvals for property located at 6 Carroll Court. Public notice was printed in time to our record on May 18, 2023, and to date, no written comments were received. Is there anyone here representing the advocate for Ross?
She's not in the audience, Tim.
Okay.
Do you want me to tell you who's doing what she's doing?
Go ahead.
She has an application before the ZDA, so I'm familiar with it. She has an existing dwelling, and as previously, it used to be used as with an accessory dwelling unit, the bottom half of it. But under your code, you can only have an accessory dwelling unit until you sell the property. Once you sell the property and it changes hands, it becomes non-able, and you would need to apply for a new. She's applying for a new, apparently it's for her mother and sister, or sister and... It's two family members. And it's not an extension on the house, it's just the basement of the house.
It's mother, sister, and brother.
Oh, okay. I knew there were brothers.
I knew there was a mom in here, sister and brother.
Wait, is there any extension on the house, or are you doing any type of...
There's no type of construction involved at all.
It's simply just a mother-daughter?
It's a mother-daughter that couldn't be used as a mother-daughter any longer, so she wants to reuse it as that.
Okay. Uh, I don't see any issue with that. She was also asking for, I guess, her fees to be waived on this?
Yes, that's permitted under your, um, your waiver request, you know, uh, resolution.
All right, anyone from the board have any comments on this one?
I just got a question. Is this the same one that came before us, before they asked for a special for a business?
No, that is Ms. Valdez.
Oh, okay.
And yeah, I'm getting confused. It seems like it's the same thing.
Yeah, they all got put on hold, all of these requests, so with the moratorium until this extension came in before you, so we're trying to process them now as they come up. Uh, I think some of them started in like 2021, so we're trying to process them.
So, if there's this change, zero change in the homes, zero building, zero difference in living, I don't... I don't see why this even, it needs much more discussion than that. I mean, I talked to you guys, but...
Dick, you got any comments?
I have no comment on this either.
Uh, anyone else on the board with any comments?
No.
Going out to the public, anyone wish to speak on the waiver request for Ross for 6 Carroll Court? Going once, going twice. All right, can I get a motion and a second to close the public hearing?
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now, I guess I have two, two items. First off, can I have a motion and a second to approve the waiver request for 6 Carroll Court?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And, can I have a motion, sorry, can I have a motion and a second to waive the associated fees with the mother-daughter?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that ends that. Okay. On to the continued public hearing on Local Law 1. Public hearing is being continued from the April 27 meeting to entertain public comments on introductory Local Law 1 of 2023, creating new chapters 255, short-term rentals of the village code. At this point, you have also received no written comments on this local law. Uh, I will go out to the public first on Local Law 1. So, anyone wishing to speak on short-term, alright?
Here we go.
Here we go.
Oh, you have a cat, I get this, I'm gonna do that. Yes.
Beautiful.
Hi, everybody. My name is Amy Celine. I live in 14 Chestnut Drive in Central Valley, as I have for 30 years. It's a fabulous property. I've got plus minus three acres in the front that is owned commercial. I have a legal long-term rental. Both of those things have a lot of value in my property. By making, by putting this law in and allowing the Airbnb, the short-term rentals, you are immediately reducing the value of my property. And I'm not sure how I would address how many... He's got a D. S. R. M. R. And I know a lot of my neighbors, well, not, I know two of my direct neighbors are in the same situation. Um, am I going to be compensated in my taxes? Will my taxes go down because my commercial property is no longer as valuable, because now potentially every property in the village of Woodbury is commercial? Because if you're conducting short-term rentals, that's commerce, that's commercial. Okay? And that's a problem. I also want to speak to, um, a lot of people coming into my lovely... That are buying up houses to rent them out, to bring down the value of the neighborhood on purpose. That's also a problem, because this opens up a lot of people, "Well, I'll just rent it out, I'll just, I'll just, I'll just have an Airbnb, I can buy this crappy old place, and I can put a few Band-Aids on, and I can keep bringing down the value of the neighborhood." That's a problem for me and my neighbors. Now, directly, I want to speak to a particular neighbor. I don't, I probably shouldn't say their address.
No.
So, I'm referencing an email I sent to Mr. Penelope at the building department last summer.
How did you get that?
Um, June 14th at 3:25 PM.
I'm going to just say now she has turned in, and I'm going to send it to you as your...
Um, and I wrote, "Dear Mr. Penelope, I thought that the relatively new residents of blah 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 were just a very noisy new family who hosted loudly to fireworks, including parties, which disturbed the entire neighborhood." That's a short-term rental. That's a short-term rental. Then I learned that they are renting out the Brooklyn backyard as a party venue. For an extra $25, you can get extra loud speakers. For $150, you can get a movie screen. And they include fireworks, which are incredibly dangerous. Why we allow people in the town other than at celebrations professionals for the town to have fireworks, I don't know either, but that's kind of a subject. And it, um, it's disturbing, it's disturbing to all of our neighbors, other than that. Um, when I, I relate this to the, the Local Law 1 that we're addressing that way. And specifically, I'm, I'll cut right to the chase. Um, on page nine, uh, 255-10 grounds for suspension or revocation of permit. E, any conduct on the premises that disturbs the health, safety, peace, or comfort of the neighborhood, or which otherwise creates a public nuisance. This is a public nuisance. It's disturbing. It disturbs my, my, my little, my little dog who starts shaking and her eyes get crazy. Am I supposed to tranquilize my dog because these neighbors moved in and, you know? And there's a lot of other... I moved to my neighborhood because it is lovely and quiet. I love all my neighbors. All of my neighbors that I have spoken to about this direct issue agree with me, whether they're here tonight or not. Um, and I want to somehow do preventative. I don't want to have to wait until I have to complain about them violating this new law or the new code before I make a complaint. I want to do preventative action. I want that's possible. Perhaps you guys can advise me on that. I also don't like the idea of short-term rentals, specifically, I'm almost done, don't. I saw you roll your eyes.
No, no, no.
Specifically, I don't like the idea of short-term rentals, because here again, I live in a lovely neighborhood on purpose. Um, I've been there for 30 years, and I don't want transit coming through my neighborhood. I don't want shoplifters, shoppers, whatever, in the cabins renting my neighbors' houses. I just don't. I think that's probably most of what I need to say. Other than, I realize that this is happening anyway, so you've got to, you've got to regulate it in some way. And I think that you guys will, um, will address my issues.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you for the tip also, because this is kind of high of her.
It, uh, it was to me. And, and when I did complain, there was no response, really.
Hi, my name is Tara Westerveld. I live on 38 Sumitah Heights. Uh, Amy is one of my neighbors, lovely neighbors. Um, we all live in a historic, uh, neighborhood. Uh, do you know what year your home was built?
1906, and we're about to put it on the National Storage Register.
Wow, that's amazing. Um, my home was built in 1890. Okay, so we're talking about some of the oldest homes that are in Woodbury. Um, rest of my neighborhood, we're all considered a hope, clove, uh, neighborhood. Fun little fact, the man that lived in my home is the man who invented the fly fishing rod, fun little... Anyway, so we live in a beautiful neighborhood, um, beautiful homes. It is quiet. We all love our neighbors. Um, our neighbors have all, I've been, had neighbors for who moved, have lived in my house now for 35 years, 35 years. Love all my neighbors. Not much else, except for one who no longer is here anymore. That's a whole section, separate section. Um, what I would like to request is an explanation, because from what I've seen online, um, some town, uh, members and stuff like that are a little confused by the legal jargon that is on these, in the paperwork. Basically, can we break it down so it's more not blah, 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 blah? Uh, for example, uh, use of any sound reproduction device or musical instrument outside a structure, either on private property or a public right-of-way or public space at any time within the village, which by causing noise annoys or disturbs quiet comfort or repose of a reasonable person or normal sensitivities. What exactly is a sound-producing device?
That's what I'm talking about.
Uh, it is section 208-4 of your unreasonable noises.
Oh, you're not talking about the short-term rental?
It's part of the short-term rental, being that they also want to change, uh, the time to 11 PM from 10 PM. So, this is where my point is very broad.
So, you're looking then at the only place that chapter 208 is referenced is 255D...
Where it states in...
255, I'll run it for a second. 255-5D3B refers to chapter 208 noise, and it references required to observe quiet hours from 11 PM to 7 AM. I just wanted to know where that's...
Sure, sure. So, what I'm asking is for, for basic breakdown of what is considered a sound reproduction device. Is that a microphone?
Is that the noise order you're reading from, or the short-term rental?
Well, it's in the short-term rental law. You have to approve that everybody that is going to be coming has to abide by one's rules.
And if the section here actually you're reading from, is that the noise order?
Yes. Right, because it says to refer to that.
So, it's in the actual...
So, what I would like to be explaining to you is what a sound reproduction device is. Is it a speaker?
I've never personally seen one, a sound...
It's producing, it's more than just a speaker, but a speaker would fall into that category.
Thank you. Speaker?
Yes.
So, speaker, a microphone.
I would have to look at a list. I don't want to go through it.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of, but being that it just says that line term, I think a lot of people are getting lost in that. Uh, so, in, in my opinion, what I believe is to be a speaker, a microphone, um, speakers with loud movies, uh, projection streams outside. Um, loud screaming, singing. Um, it states that you want to have a music in your home, such as a musical instrument, or singing karaoke, whatever you want in your home, it's up. It cannot be heard 100 feet out of the property. Okay, so, now we're outside the home. These things are going on outside the home. So, why, the second these things are going on outside the home, is nothing being done there.
This sounds more like a complaint of a noise violation rather than a review of the short-term rental law, which is...
Well, but it's, but it has to be involved with...
If you're saying that these people are complaints, then those should be reported to the building department.
They have to, they have been, like 10 other people, and the condition's done.
But also, shouldn't it be in the hordes of the police department as well?
Oh, they weren't.
Were they what? This is, we're, we're looking at a specific event from that...
Several.
We have at least eight or 10 people that have filed complaints, and all that was taken was, we're looking into that now. And, uh, it's been six months.
Is it still going, Tara? Has it still been going on there for six months?
Uh, it's gonna start up again.
It's not the summer, so you were...
It's gonna start up this weekend, which is, last year, I had to call the police because I was assaulted by my son, who is severely autistic and cannot handle loud noises. So, from my yard, this particular area, uh, we are not our neighbors. We are actually at least probably 900 feet, which you said?
Well, there's a little seat square between the two.
Right, so their area where they party is on a side from where my home is. My son, who has severe, severe autism, cannot walk outside my house because the noise is so loud. I have to take him every weekend when these parties are happening and leave my home because he can't hear the noise. He has little pool, he loves to go in his pool every summer. Now, all the things make him happy. That pool does. He can no longer go in his pool because of this. Uh, these short-term rentals, which she has here, which I have a copy wherever you see, has a, uh, a venue of up to 50 people. Wedding venue, up to 50 people. Uh, movie screen, loud movie speaker. Uh, up to 30 people at a time. These are all things that have been going on for two years now. Uh, since this was printed last year, last May, uh, she's had over 25 reviews since then. Um, I called the police the one time. I've been having nothing but ramifications since then. Other neighbors have... I'm at the building department, I call the police department, and ask them to take care of the property because I was assaulted. My son literally almost ripped out my eye.
Tara, Tara, just face, face this way when you're calling.
She's a lawyer, so...
I know, I know, but she can hear you.
Okay, so anyway, getting back, what I would like to see with these short-term rentals, which we know are going to happen anyway, uh, from what I've been reading about other towns that have these, uh, they have different stipulations in place, which I would like to, um, ask the board if they can take into consideration. Uh, one being that the property that is requesting this be at least two acres. That the short-term permit shall be valid for only one year, not two. Um, everybody has to, if you have, uh, the accessory apartment, you have to apply every year. And this is for somebody that I know who lives in the residence, um, who know everything about them or, you know, their name, address, their driver's license. All these people coming in, we're not even writing about them.
Just, can I just interrupt for one second? For the accessory dwellings, they don't need to come in every year. Once it's granted, it's good, but when they sell the property, it lapses. And in the draft that I just, that I, the board is looking at tonight for short-term rentals, it is only one year.
Oh, okay, great. Um, it says here that the properties for short-term rentals, after this chapter takes place, shall be permitted to honor such existing commitments and continue to make commencements for short-term rentals until they apply for the permit within 180 days. So, let's say...
Sorry, what section are you looking at, Sarah?
I'm looking at section, uh, 255-3D. Yes, 255-3D. Yes. So, um, well, let's just say you know that your neighbors are not going to approve a long rental. Well, now I've got six months to run that thing without an issue. Well, then, there goes our summer again. Um, so what, in that case, what happens? Uh, it states that only in, sorry, which chapter here, uh, that what is it, 15 people are allowed on the premises at the time?
I'm sorry, I kept asking you that, it's just easier for the...
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It's okay, it's okay. What section are you... Can you give me 5-5A number for the maximum number of people?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so maximum number of people. Uh, it states that if the homeowners are in the house, that is included in that maximum number of people. We all know that's not accurate. Um, what do we do when that does happen? There's ways around that, or all of a sudden, the police come, "Oh, well, this isn't, this isn't a rental, this is my family having a party." So, that 50, assuming the wedding was 50, we have no jurisdiction on, because, uh, well, it's private, it, it, it's, she's not going to pay for it. These are things we can say around it. Um, also, the noise orders go until 11 PM. New York City, the city that never sleeps, is 10 PM. Why the small town of Woodbury, we go until 11? That's crazy. That's, like, why? Uh, the surrounding town is same thing, 10:00. Uh, let's sit back on the right here, so everyone else can speak. I also, uh, in my opinion, after saying that, uh, I feel that these homes should be on two acres, I also think that it should be within one-fourth mile of the residence. So, all those neighbors that are in that jurisdiction there should be asked about this. Because there's a lot of neighbors who are too afraid, because they know what happened to me, uh, to, to come out and say these things. They have applied to the board, um, to their concerns, um, in emails, which we were all told at different times. Um, I was even, uh, there's someone in the room also right now, uh, who had sent information to June 3rd. So, called the police the 25th, sent information to see how to proceed with this, um, which was Maria. She put in the complaint and filed saying, uh, "Is this legal to the mayor and to the building department?" They said, "Thanks for letting me know, we'll check it out." Amy put in her complaint, what was that date?
June 25th.
June 25th, okay. So, that's just two people here, and obviously, my complaint to the mayor. We're looking into it, we're looking into it. Other people have written letters of my neighborhood. I don't have their dates, but they're in there. Um, whereas Andrew has told me that he has never seen anything, nothing ever came across his desk. Okay. September comes, and now, uh, someone has called the police because there is uh, so much traffic, you can't drive, on edge of drive, all the cars are parking illegally. so much traffic, you can't drive on edge of the drive, all the cars are parked illegally. They're all parked the wrong way. So finally, the police went up there, I'm not really sure. Anyway, so shortly after that, the building department did go there and they were issued a, some sort of a sentence for not having electric, something like that. I'm not exactly sure what it is. But anyway, it states here that if you put in a complaint to the building department, you have 45 days to respond. So when you start getting, okay, so one, then you've got two, you've got three, you've got four, you've got five, you've got six. September 13th, I think it was, was when the, finally, the building department went there. So now we're gonna open this up to let everybody rent. We don't have enough people in the building department to be doing these things. The police department doesn't want to be bothered with this. I mean, this is just absurd. I'm also requesting for a special accommodation for the Fair Housing Act and the People with Disabilities Act. To put in a request. Obviously, I'm not, it's just a request, could be more. That all homes within one-fourth a mile of these homes where people have post-traumatic stress, they have, they're senior citizens. They've lived in this area and should be allowed to enjoy the life that it actually states in your senior citizens and People with Disabilities Act, how they have a different life that they need to enjoy. That have lived here for 40-something years. So I would like to put in a thing banning all short-term rentals within one-fourth mile of home. And you're also asking, in a one-fourth mile of that home, your neighbors to say whatever on that. So there is kind of a little in there, but I also would like to request for a a restricted quiet zone where certain areas are designated to people that have disabilities, to the elderly. Again, they're here forever, they do have different accommodations. When you can't enjoy the dwelling of your home, when you can't walk outside your home because the noise is so loud, that's just unacceptable. So what I would request is, in that area, after you have medical documentation from, everyone would have to apply for it, that the noise, the decimals go down to 50 permanently in that area. Unless obviously there's construction, there's certain things. Or let's say the neighbor does want to have a graduation party. Absolutely, there's certain things that could be in place for that. And my good neighbors couldn't let us all know, like, hey, I'm having a party, you should come by, we revealed the lack. Right now, the decimal, the way it works, which I was wondering if you could explain that, as far as going back to the rental, short-term rentals, from 7:00 A.M. to 6:00 P.M., it says it's 65 decimals. Okay, that's not very loud. Then from 6:00 P.M. to 7:00 A.M., it's 55. Now, with the 11 o'clock, if I could just have somebody explain the 11 o'clock quiet time, so does that mean after these decimals are taken into account, if somebody's making noise, 65, 70, 80, 90 decimals during 7:00 A.M. to 6:00 P.M. And I have the reading from my property, is it to be from my property line or to the person causing the noise? So, here's the street, here's their home property line. Is it that, or is it, there's the street, and here's my house? Because obviously you're gonna get all different decimals. But if you're doing the right thing, and you've got 65 decimals on three feet in front of your speaker, then nobody should hear it. When you're getting 90 and 95 from my house, that's 800 feet away. It's just, I also wanted to bring up that we have all these hotel stuffs, and we have approved. Hampton Inheritance, which is, that's our jurisdiction. We have 136 rooms there. American Best Value Inn, 50 rooms. Comfort and Suites, that is, 85 rooms, which is for sale now. What's happening with that, we don't know. Hopefully not, hopefully it'll go on, whatever. Did the La Quinta Hotel get approved yet, or is it?
No, other hotels are approved.
Okay. These are people that are coming in, or the Shops at Woodbury, that was approved, correct?
Approved.
Okay, and was.
The Shops at Woodbury was approved.
It was approved, but it's not built yet. The hotel, its site plan is approved.
The site plan is approved, and the ARB for Building 9, which is a courtyard Marriott.
Okay, do you want me to remove that thing? Okay, so basically, we're talking about over 800 rooms that are now available to the area. Not including all the ones that are in it. So we've got Woodbury Common, who wants to put in 240. We've got the Courtyard Marriott on Turner Road, which is 108. The La Quinta Hotel, which is gonna be right across from that, will be 130. And the Shops at Woodbury, obviously, don't know what that is. So we're talking about almost 900 rooms that are going to be bedding their people. You have to get a driver's license, you have to have everybody in the room, everybody in the room's gotta have a driver's license. You have to give them your license plate number. But here we're gonna have short-term rentals where, yeah, I don't know who you are, be sex offender, be a drug addict, you could be just not good people, and here they are next door to your house. We have had two back-to-back armed robberies in the town of Woodbury. Don't worry about those. Within eight weeks of each other. And how much money went to these things? Just to catch these people. There's a whole world wide, you know, all different towns were involved in it, I can't imagine what that was. And now we're gonna have people who we have no idea who they are, having bachelor parties in your backyard, having a wedding venue in their backyard. The whole thing is an item. And if you read online, there is not one town that says that they are benefiting from it and that they are all trying to do everything in their power to put new rules, hence two neighbors, whatever else, to try to prevent it, because it's not fair. There's a housing shortage. These people buying these homes to strictly use it as a big invasion. You're taking that away from people who could buy the house, or who maybe can't buy the house, but could rent there permanently. My father's had eight rentals in Woodbury. Never once would he ever do a short-term rental. He's had wonderful tenants, they've been able to live in the environment, enjoy the environment, and at a rate that was more than reasonable for them. Otherwise, they wouldn't have been able to enjoy this beautiful town. So, that's my deal.
Thank you, Tara.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tara.
Anyone else wishing to speak on the short-term rental law?
Maria Hunter, first of all, I want to thank the board on the proposal for law one, 255-3B, dropping it down to one year for short-term permit. But, on page nine, 255-9, the first sentence says renewal permits will be granted for an additional two-year term.
Sorry. No, you're right, I missed it.
And there's actually, the five dash nine is up?
Yeah, the.
Yeah, and it's actually one more place on that same page. I have to find it, but I, that was one of them. Sorry.
The text.
Okay. I know, but I want, you know, I, I know what the intent of what the board's trying to do, but thank you for reducing from two years to one year, I thought that was very considerate. Tara touched on it.
The signage, you asked for last time.
Yes, I'll go to that. I'll go to that. Some mother daughters that we do have accessory, whatever you wanna call them, I call them mother daughter homes. The building inspector doesn't have to do a yearly report anymore on that, am I mistaken about the planning, zoning board?
I'd have to look at the inspections, what I meant was that the permit itself doesn't expire every year.
Yeah, I think that doesn't need to be.
That's up to a fire inspection every year.
I think there's fire inspections, I just didn't want people to think that.
Yes, they don't have to reapply.
They don't have to reapply, but they do have some kind of yearly testing. So, I just want to make sure that the mother daughter and the Airbnb, they match, because it makes sense that we do have some who live in there permanently, we just approved one or two of them earlier, so. The other thing is, I was just thinking about is, when you have an application for a short-term rental, as in the planning board, when there's something before the planning board, when there's some public here, certain things, you send out notices to the neighbors, whether it be 300 or 500 feet within the area, where I don't see that in this law that maybe possibility to think about, that maybe that someone within the 300 to 500 feet that have a child that's autistic, or you have a adult that has something wrong with them, at least you can get input from the public. And that's something I just thought about tonight, and I'm sorry about that, Kelly, because I was listening to Tara. But also, I want to thank the board for taking out the section about having signs on every of these particular properties that could have an Airbnb, so thank you for that, because I thought that was something that would not look great in neighborhoods in an area, so I do thank you for that. Page 255-5A, 13, which is page five on I for depth. It says not to exceed 12 people with this septic system. You have to have a yearly septic report from this particular homeowner, I don't, I didn't see that in there. But if you're gonna have an Airbnb and they have a septic system, and you have 12 people coming for the weekend or a week, and there are more people than what a normal home would have, I think a septic, because that could pose a health problem, if their septic system overflows and it should be, whether it's pumped to you or checked, that's something that, after reading this law, I was like, hmm.
Look at number 15. Is it, look at number 15.
Pumped in the last four years, a proof of pumping, but it doesn't say at least every four years. I know when I have a septic system, I can't go every four years to have my septic system pumped, it has to be somewhat yearly. And it's only three of us living there now. So it's, it's just something to think about for those who have septic systems. And when you start having 12 people four or five times a month, it could, it could worsen the system. They've got a sign in. And I did have a concern about the noise level, which Tara went into. With the sign law, it does state the 55 DBAs at night from 6:00 P.M. to 7:00 A.M. You do have restrictions for construction, lawn mowing, certain times you can't do it, you know, you have to stop. And neighbors that have that need, living in a lot of homes, and constantly have these types of things going on with Airbnb rentals, it could start posing a problem. And I'm surprised when I watched that go off with 80 decimals, but with me talking. I can talk quite loudly, and this thing will go up to an old thing that's 80 decimals. So, do you want to see me into the room?
I'm sure.
I could be talking to someone, and I can have my radio in the car. Not mine, because I don't like that, and my watch was off, you're approaching 80 decimals, and I'm inside the car. So, decimals can be, and I know the police, with the law, how this was interpreted, I don't know, have machines that test, the building department has it, these are just different things that residents, we don't have all the answers to that. Oh, and the other thing is, if a short-term rental permit application is only upon receipt of completed short-term rental permit application and adjacent property owners of a short-term will be notified by the applicant.
Section.
I'm sorry, page seven, it's 255-6A, B.
A.
No, that's A.
It's A.
Thank you. That's okay. Usually, hopefully, this is clear enough that the applicant pays for all these notifications, not the village. This shouldn't be the village's responsibility, if it's not written, it can't be done. That's from a very reliable attorney I used to work with, two of them. So I'm just, and you took care of the 255-9 with the two years, you're gonna make it a one year. I thought it was a second one, if I see it, I'll let you know, Kelly.
Thank you.
No, no problem. And it's just, I understand truly what you're trying to accomplish, because we do have some issues. So I know this has been ongoing, and I know from hearing from the two residents tonight, there are more concerns that we all have to think about, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else on short-term rentals?
Yes, for the cats. I did not do my research.
Yeah, Tara, wait, wait, first thought, you gotta introduce yourself.
Sorry, I'm a part of your neighbor.
She knows you, she says.
She knows me. So, I didn't do my research, but I've spoken to my neighbors, and I live very close to a family that has short-term rentals, so within earshot, and I don't have any children with disabilities, but if I did, or if I did not, the noise level is intolerable. And when we lodge complaints, if there are, if there are specified rules and regulations for short-term rentals, and they're violated, and people lodge complaints, but the complaints go unanswered, ignored, delayed, then basically, that is a bigger problem than, than what's, what's out there, it's a huge problem. We're all dealing with, you know, we have complaints that are being not addressed, and that was really the whole point I wanted to bring up, is that you're going to, if these rule stipulations are made, then they have to be respected and enforced. At this point, from real-life experience, they have not. So that's really just what I wanted to add to it, and I apologize for not doing my research, but I am eyewitness to how disruptive our experience in our neighborhood of short-term rental was.
Thank you. Anyone else?
There's no microphone. My name is Ann McGinnis, I live at 163 Estrada Road in Central Valley. I'm here to discuss the short-term rental proposal proposed by the Village of Woodbury. As a business owner in this town, as somebody that owns a business in a mixed residential area, I am obligated to keep the hours of no later than 10:00 P.M. So why is it okay for these guys? Secondly, if you do push through, you need to let all the businesses live it up till 11:00 P.M., which I intend to fully do. The other thing is, I was looking in here, it doesn't seem that you guys would be vetting any of the people that are coming into our community. The police, no offense to the police, but, you know, they've, they've made the laws where the police really don't have to do much. They basically let people go after they cause crimes in our community and disrupt our streets, and it's wrong. But we don't have any backing on a, on a state level. So you're putting an unfair burden at a local level to police these parties. When people rent Airbnbs, what are they doing? They're celebrating, they're partying, they're coming up to Woodbury. They're celebrating, they're partying, they're coming up to Woodbury Commons to shop, they're getting married, they're doing all these wonderful things that the Hudson Valley has to offer. But the onus is on the village to protect the people that live here. And when you write rules and laws that don't protect the people that have lived in this community for the greater half of 20, 30, 40 years, who are you writing rules for? Are you writing rules so that you can collect payments to apply for a permit to allow for these special ordinances to go through? Or is this just to make money for the village? I mean, that's what I have to ask myself as somebody that pays taxes here. Who's somebody who has to apply for permits when I need something done. Because the town doesn't do anything for me. I've had a sign sitting out front for seven years and I got a town from the building, I got a call from the building department today that my sign outside offended somebody. And I have to bring it in between the hours of 6:00 AM and 8:00 PM. Hours that my business do not operate. And you know, I, I just, I just want to ask, like, who are you all serving letting these things go on? You know? And that's my biggest question, and I don't think you guys can answer it. It's really sad. I feel bad for our community.
That's it. Thanks.
Anyone else on local law one?
Jimmy A. I, I, you know, I monitored this initially because of the Brigadoon. And of course Brigadoon got an HOA and we put in rules to stop the short-term rentals. So don't leave it to a year plus. But now we found out there's all these notices sent out. I committed ladies with research and speaking up. I got a partner in Florida, they do short-term rentals, they have Airbnbs. There's not a good thing that comes of them. It's not like, you know what, let's go dance, run a book club. It is the parties, celebrations, okay? I have autistic kids. But you know what, you mean it. I don't have autistic kids, I got two perfectly normal kids. They should feel safe to play around the house. In and out, I should have, see, okay, who's there this weekend? I don't know them. Right now, my son, daughter, they run around down the street, you know what? Manor region, west side. Or, or, or Mikey Dana. I know my neighbors, my neighbors know my kids. I don't see anyone here speaking up, we want Airbnbs. So if, I'm brand new here, I've been here a year, I don't have the timing and I respect it, but I came up here to be amongst you. Okay, I want to raise my kids. I didn't, I, I came from the city, the city that never sleeps. And I needed my sleep and I came up here with my family. But I don't want the city coming up with me. Let them celebrate somewhere else, okay? There should be no reason, I, I, I respect the research of two miles to the left, decimals. But you know what, if he's just under here, okay, he's allowed to go on, it doesn't make sense. The house next to you, everyone else, shady family, all long-term renters. The Airbnb doesn't make sense. I don't know who that is and I'm suspicious of it. I don't want you here, you could be the nicest person around renting. I don't know you, we're not, you know what? I know Vic, I know his board, I see his board every couple of weeks. Andrew, great seeing you, how was your trip?
Great.
You want to know your neighbors, that's why we're in a small town, okay? The Airbnb is changing. It's just different things. So if I see all these people speaking against it, the Brigadoon has their rules, you guys are trying to enforce those policies. Great. When Rover's doing something to try to block short-term rentals, I hear all these things trying to stop these short-term rentals. Why can't we just stop these short-term rentals? What is wrong with it? Or is that that 5%, that 1% of these homeowners mean more than us? They allow her, I mean, I don't know, I don't know the law, I mean, I don't know what I'm talking about. But instead of regulating, why can't we work on eliminating?
Kelly, would you like to answer that?
Well, we believe that you can't, that's considered basically a taking. However, just so that everybody knows, the New York State government is actually considering a law that they would take over the regulations. So what the village is doing is trying to get in regulations that do protect for the safety of the residents, take into account the residents where when applications go up to Albany, they're gonna know even less about this municipality.
Correct.
So that's why they're holding another public hearing, getting the comments from the D Act and making revisions to what's there to try and address their concerns.
But the whole thing is that, you know, I know specifically in a small area in the Brigadoon, they're violating the insert notice. Wait, it is not, they're, they're still reading the following.
Well, there's, what's in place now is very difficult because when it's time to actually go and serve them, that is not being observed anymore.
Yes, correct.
This law protects against that. It goes back to, there's a presumption that you are operating on if you are advertising. So then you pull up, sorry, I keep running. You have the ad for Airbnb, she has the ad for Airbnb. And so that's a presumption that you are operating. So there's, there's protections like that built in here, but I mean...
But yeah, what are you gonna do? Because we show, so I'm very...
Come in, you're saying from Airbnb and you say, hey, building inspector, they're advertising for an Airbnb. There may be no renters in there right now, but you know how to do that. And that's a presumption that they are violating this law. And so people out there are saying, actually, get them.
It, it, it's just, you know, no, that's, no, that's somebody who bought a house and, and it's there.
And that's, and people...
That's nice, but there's a bit of that. I mean, he, all the septic systems. And it's like, there's no, this is, this is the law.
You can't completely cut it out. You, you're not able to...
Kelly, is there any municipality right now that is at, has outlawed Airbnb?
Yes.
Short-term rentals?
Successfully without getting sued and holding...
Nashville, Ohio. But it's not a good word. Right, we have to scream board, you have to...
Sure.
Guys, they take 1% of cases. And the ones that I, they weren't able to get rid of it, but restrictions were put in place, so two years. Around two years, guess what? It's not even an option. There was a recent court case over the summer, that the past summer, the end of the summer. They impacted any existing laws at that time and any municipality like you that are looking to enact all the laws. Because it, it blew a lot of those laws out of the water. So if somebody had a law in place that still didn't comply with that, it's easily challengeable. So what we're trying to do is put in place a law that complies with the case law so that it wouldn't get challenged easily, but also balance that with the rights of those individuals that do own houses and then the rights of the people that are renting out and the rights of the people that are not renting out their houses and want to use the, the apartment.
And the HOAs. Because that's a law, I thought they can set their own rules.
They can set their own rules that's enforced by them. So if there's currently a prohibition in any HOA that is in the village that has had any Airbnb, that's a private matter between the HOA and that property owner. That's not with the village. Certainly a complaint could be made to the village or the building inspector to look into it. But if it's prohibited by the HOA, that's between the HOA and...
Jimmy, the HOAs I, I've talked to, or actually, I think, I don't think I've missed one, but they've all got laws in place for short-term rentals.
Oh, certainly.
Yeah, HLE, Brigadoon, do you guys have any plans with it?
Yes.
Yeah. I know it's a two-year shot, all four phases due, Woodbury Heights. And I did speak to W P three with theirs. So I, all the HOAs, their laws are going to supersede ours in terms of the short-term rentals. So, but I mean, that doesn't sort of, these people here, for your situation, they can say, nah, an HOA. So what can I...
Yeah, we're not one, we're gonna be one, they're gonna be one. They need to take that with the Attorney General, that's the issue.
Yeah, that's, that's the general law.
Of the Attorney General.
Because it's just, I just keep hearing like, no, we don't want it, no, we don't want it. So where are all these people that want it? Why are we protecting these people that are doing this to this community? Okay, are we waiting for that one incident, that DWI from that bread, you know, that Airbnb? Or the wrong person at that Airbnb? You know, you follow news, you hear the stories, okay? It's areas changing, right? I don't need the trans, I don't, you know, but Heather Rich, you know, that, that... Every time I see a different car go up in that next street, you know, I, 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 I worry, okay?
And they go fast.
And they go fast.
Has the HOA seen them?
Nobody.
Has the HOA gone after them?
We have, we have a law, I don't want to interrupt, Jimmy. We have a law that was passed by the...
By the...
By the... That is now that the state attorney general's office is waiting to be signed into law. Into our laws. It's not, it's not into effect yet, but it's on his desk somewhere.
See, you know, I love the Brigadoon, but you know, I love it. I, I, I defended, I, you know, I acted with it. But what I saw here, when these ladies came here with a paper, the research cover, the save, I was like, wow. Because honestly, you know, you'll be here, right here, occasionally, Brigadoon, but they're trying to defend it. But everybody's speaking up against it. I just don't hear that owner who's running that Airbnb affecting his position. Because he doesn't have a stance, he doesn't have a leg to stand on. He's introducing elements into my community that I don't know, that I'm not comfortable with. I live in Kansas City, it's a small town, we know each other, okay? You know what, I see any of these ladies next meeting, hi, how you doing? How's it going? And that's why we love it here. And instead of us, you know, this band-aid, trying to fix this regulator or whatever, I understand, it's meant to something. But shouldn't we be trying to stop this, period? I can't. I mean, there's no possible way. Even if we...
Well, this, this law gives you the regulations too.
Right now, there's nothing.
Right now, we can't do anything, because there's no law.
Right now, there's nothing, we can't do anything about it right now, because there's zero on the laws. So it's unregulated, wild, wild west. So we're trying to regulate it to a point where we put protections. But you've got to understand, an HOA and government are two different things. An HOA, you voluntarily move in and sign a covenant with the HOA that you're in agreement to live by their rules and regulations in the HOA. That's completely different, that's voluntary. If you don't like an HOA, you don't like their rules, don't move into it. That's, that, that is a different situation. Government can't tell you what to do with your property to that extent. They can't take, what they're doing is taking your property from you. What Kelly meant by taking is they're taking a use from you. And we can't do that as a government, we're not allowed to do that. So the only other way we can do this is regulate it to try and make it as safe as possible. And we're listening to what you're saying. And we will try and incorporate things that will make it safer. But we can't take away your right to earn money on your property. We can't do that.
Except then it's taken away. What if, if they're not zoning commercial, how can we do this?
It's not a commercial.
Well, it is, it's commerce. You're, you're collecting rent as a short-term rental. That's commerce, that's commercial. That's definitely commercial.
Well, I don't know the state doesn't... That's a different argument because then long-term rentals, you're making money as well, so...
And I got a legal long-term rental.
That's not commercial property then, it's rental property.
I do have commercial property in the front of the law, which now equates the value of state property.
It's rental, renting is a residential area, it's a residency. Commercial underzoning is a totally different, completely different description.
I'm hoping that some of the issues that I brought up, and I'd like to make...
Thank you, Jenny.
I'm hoping that that probably helps.
It will.
Yeah, it will.
Yeah.
I just, I just hope you understand that, we're not sitting here saying, move on, short-term rentals, we think they're bad. We're trying to find the balance, okay? So, and your feedback has given me a lot to think about and I think it was very valuable. But just understand, we're not sitting here going, we love short-term rentals, let's bring them to Woodbury, okay? They're here and we're trying to protect people's interests as best we can.
I just want to make an apology to the attorney, she, that was only number two.
Yeah.
But I misinterpreted, 255-8, compliance and penalties. A, five, to revoke a short-term rental. If they, if you revoke it, they can't apply again for one year after the date that's the revoke. But if you go down to C, put that 255-8, we go into number one, there's violations, there's three steps, three violations. If, why go to a third and a second violation? You get a violation the first time, you don't do it and correct it, boom, pull that away. Because that to me would be a way to have more control. Because the building inspector, we have to go back where I complained the first time, sued, complained the second time for the same property. And these penalties, I'm sure if you go to court with them, I don't know how your judges are going to react. Because I know years ago, we had a judge that said, if you're being doubt, then we're into the laws. And I'm not saying that it was good, bad, or indifferent, but can it happen again? If you take and go to the court with this, because you have to go to the court. So after the first time, you're going to say, hey, that's it, you had your first shot, no more chances after that. So that's where I got confused with additional time and, so I apologize to the attorney on that. Can I just...
Thank you, Mary.
You're welcome. Again, I'm also getting back to the, please, I've seen some other towns have put in, so your first violation is $1,500. Second violation is $5,000. So you got your warrant the first time, you can't clean up your act, $5,000. And then everything is taken away. So people are really going to be on top of what their renters are going to be doing. You know, obviously, and that's going to come out of their money. So you might be making, let's say, $200, $300 for the day, you're renting out a pool for $75 an hour. Is it worth losing $1,500 though because your guests are being high and inappropriate? So if you can make those fees higher, so they realize we need business. And this is what's going to happen, not just, oh, okay. You know, or a $50 fee where they're like, well, I just made $500, what's that?
That's good, good, thank you.
Anyone, anyone else before?
Very, very last, because I would also recommend... Amy, so we know again. I would also recommend that the fee for the permit for the Airbnb be insurmountable. Preventatively. And you can do that, I know you can.
But can it be considered...
I'm sure you can, I'm sure you can.
No, no, okay.
But I broke it down.
All right, Kelly, why don't you, we're not going on this night.
No, there's a lot of changes.
There's some changes, but Kelly, you had some changes relevant to this beforehand. So we knew we would not be going on this night, so...
So I would, I would, as you saw from the last version that the board considered to this new version, there were a lot of changes that were incorporated into the public, there were public changes, suggestions that were made that you would determine what to incorporate the, I think there's more that you heard tonight that should be further researched to be incorporated. And there were some things that I wanted to discuss with the board and then in terms of light afterwards, that may be additions to this as well prior to any action being taken. So I would request that you don't take action on this agenda.
So let's do this. Can I have a motion in a second to hold over? Hold over the public hearing to, will the June 22nd give you that time? And can the board, if you need them, to agree once again? Okay.
I'll send it to them, but their review is done, I can't re-refer it once again.
Okay, so can I have a motion in a second to continue the public hearing, uh, public hearing to our June 22nd meeting? Mentioned by Vick, second to Tara. All in favor?
Yeah.
There you go. Can I see moving right along?
No.
No, no, okay. Introductory Local Law 8 of 2023, ARB revisions. Our hearing is being held to maintain public comments on introductory Local Law 8 of 2023, amending the Architectural Review Board rules to review and clarify the guidelines of standards of the Architectural Review Board. All notice was printed in the Times' record on May 18, 2023, and no written comments were received. So, um... Okay. Kelly, why don't you? Why don't you, um... Why don't you discuss the law?
Yes.
Okay.
So you previously had authorized the granting of amendments to your ARB. It got referred to the planning board, the planning board take back some recommendations. So what is before the board being considered by the public will tonight. It increases the number of things that can not go through the ARB process before the planning board, but go directly through the building inspector. So new debts in addition to that resulted in less than 750, 750 gross square feet total. That's an increase from previously, that was 500 square feet that goes up to... That's an increase from previously, that is five hundred square feet that goes up to, uh, seven hundred and fifty square feet. And. If modifications have been approved by the planning board or the building department within ten years of a new application, then it has to go to the ARB. And what that does is it kind of brings it back into your subdivision regulations, where if you have subdivision within ten years, then you have to include that prior subdivision with the new application. So that somebody can't just go seven hundred, seven hundred, seven hundred, it needs to be reviewed by the. Those are the primary changes today.
All right, do we know how many applications this would directly affect at this point, the changes that were proposed? I mean, I I know that's.
If I had to guess, I don't think this actually applies to any that are pending. Maybe one, I don't think it applies to any that are currently pending, that I would think, though.
Uh, I think that's my issue with the changes. I would like to, with everything coming in front of the planning board over the next several months, um, I would like to be able to take more and put it on to the building departments, uh, or the building inspector, so you kind of address these things. So I don't know how the rest of the board feels, I don't know how the public feels on that. So, um, let me start the board, anyone wish to comment on it?
I think we have to see how many quantify, how many to the past year.
Do we have the manpower to.
Right, if the building department.
Have the manpower to accommodate that.
He's totally loaded now, right now, so I'm not worried so much about manpower, I'm just worried about.
Just think about, though, the planning board, they have the consultants reviewing law, please, do they have the same support?
Well, they should, correct, there are the same consultants on both ends, so it needs to be, but I'm assuming what will happen is the referral process will go, the building inspector, Mike Pinella, will make that decision. I'm assuming there are still going to be applications that have to go.
Yeah, because Kelly, aren't there calculations that engineers have to do with ARB?
For what type of calculations?
I don't know, just, just things that I've seen reports and meeting documents where Mike put into those calculations.
I think it depends on whatever's being requested, um, I think if it's the debt, then that's how.
No, the debt, but if it's.
Like, could be like certain additions, maybe if there's like, I say a low calculation, but it should be evaluated, not with the bill of code.
I think I, I would like to speak to Mike, if that's a question, before you. Go and give him a story.
Do I need a attorney client with Mike, or do I need to have Mike speak now, or?
I think he has to speak now, I think we have to quantify first.
Okay.
What happens? I would think over the last year, looking at what the planning board has reviewed, to see what workload we're adding to him and whether or not it.
And Natalie and I can put together a list of things that's been considered in the last twelve months and see what would volunteer and what would not.
Yep.
Okay. All right, that's, that's a reasonable.
So do we need the public hearing?
Uh, good, I don't know if anyone here from the, let me finish with the board, any other comments from the board? Anyone from the public wishing to speak on what we're. Come on now.
Very, I'm very good. If you take ARB away from the planning board, the debts is one thing, but when you start doing additions on buildings, I'm going to throw out to you WP three, you're on the top of Route six, and you see that huge monster house that's up there. That was before the planning board, it was denied. The builder went and said, the owner, I'm going to build a house that's within the plan. It went back to that department and was approved. The building, the planning board denied it because of the size of the building and the impact looking down at the neighbors. To take that away, and the reason why you have the planning board do ARB, when they, when they approve an ARB, it goes four hundred, not four hundred, four bedrooms, and now you, and the engineers, the attorneys, they do all this calculations of the water use, sewer usage. And then now you go, and now the building inspector may not look back to see what all the calculations were, what the planning board.
Water and sewer calculations. There were calculations as well.
Yeah, so that, to those things, the building inspector may not have it readily in his hand, you don't have a, a building inspector on. Hired, right, you don't, it's, it's, you don't have an employee that's a building inspector, not a building inspector, an engineer, that's all of that. So if you had an in-house engineer, they could help the building inspector.
How did you know we were looking into that?
I have no idea, because I've been asking for this for twenty years.
Well, that's where I'm going, and Laura, do this, put this all on.
Yeah, but you know, so unless you have an in-house building inspector.
An engineer.
Engineer, excuse me, I'm really confused here, it's too late, it's like the long.
It's better time, right?
But if you have an in-house person to help the building inspector calculate all this, because my mind is reeling, especially with certain developments that were before the board for numerous years, four bedrooms max, and now they're going to five and six. And I see people who are adding on or coming before the planning board, being sent to hear this board for, because of the building moratorium. To put that one in the building inspector, I don't think is fair, is correct, unless you have engineers to support them and to do the calculations. Because you keep adding bedrooms on, calculations for water and sewer, going out.
That's not, thank you for the.
That's what I'm saying, water and sewer, water and sewer.
And I just, I think Mike is going to have to rely on H two M.
Yeah.
And it's, I don't think it'd be any quicker than if they still.
Is it any quicker to go into there, to stay with the.
Yeah, I don't know.
At least your planning board members are constantly doing, I see the list, it's on there, trust me, I know what they're going through. But once they make a decision, and the building, the person comes back and goes, the building inspector, well, I want to add this now. Why didn't that go back to the planning board, especially when they are.
Thank you, Mary. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak on what we're. Introductory law, excuse me. All right.
No, that was a.
You were offering some more.
No, I'm not, I'm not, I can't, I mean, I made someone to make arrangements or something. Great thing. I can't even.
All right. Is the board okay, first of all, keeping the public hearing open and giving us an opportunity to maybe reciprocate Mike Pinella, or to invite him into an attorney client to speak further on this? And if so, then what I'll do is I'll keep the public hearing open, look for a motion in a second to keep the public hearing open, and we'll move this also to our meeting of June twenty-second.
Green days or something now?
Well, you're right, your next meeting is the reorg. So you've already got that, plus local law eleven, plus a litany of other things. There's no sleep in the village.
I love long meetings, it's gorgeous, isn't that beautiful?
Yeah, there you go, and you get more red pajamas to the meeting.
That's a good idea, sorry.
Okay, so can I have a motion in a second to keep the public hearing open until June, or meeting of June twenty-second?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor? All right. Okay, now can I have a motion in a second to declare a negative declaration? Negative.
Motion.
Second, all in favor?
I think that's it.
Okay, moving right along, there you go, there you go, we should do, drink, you know. Okay, introductory local law nine. Nine. Nine of twenty twenty-three, rich preservation revisions. I am thinking we're going to be in the same boat with this, but I'll, I'll go through the motions. Public hearing is being held to maintain public comment, comments on introductory local law nine of twenty twenty-three. Amending the Village Code, Chapter three, ten zoning, to clarify the guidelines of standards, of. The guideline standards, rich preservation review. Public notice was printed in the Times' record on May eighteen, twenty twenty-three, and no written comments were received. Anybody from the public wishing to speak on local, introductory local law nine of twenty twenty-three?
Same comments.
Same comments, all right, so, thinking that we're in the same boat once again, let me guess, June twenty-second? June twenty-second, there you go. Can I have a motion in a second to keep the public hearing open to our meeting of June twenty-second, twenty-three?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor? All right. And I have to do a, okay, can I have a motion in a second to declare a negative declaration?
Motion, second.
All in favor? All right. Okay, and finally, introductory local law ten of twenty twenty-three, portable pools, public hearing is being held to maintain public comments on introductory local law ten of twenty twenty-three, amending the Village Code, Chapter three, ten, to include regulations related to storable, portable, pools, spas, and hot tubs. Public notice was printed in the Times' record on May twenty-third, and no written comments were received. So, Kelly, in a nutshell, what we're doing is separating portable pools out from pools in the code.
Yep.
Because they really are on two different planes.
Right.
Portable pools. And they're not portable pools, they're rentals. So we're trying to simplify the process.
Yes.
For residents.
Because there's a lot of portable pools on sale at Target, Walmart, wherever you walk into, they're, they're there now. Under the code right now, they have to go through the same process as the indoor pool.
Yeah.
So this would simplify the process, but it still does require inspection and fees, because some of them get hooked up to towers, things like that. So, um, Mike has been very helpful in putting this together for you.
Okay, then I have to the public, is anyone in the public wish to comment on local law, introductory local law ten of twenty twenty-three, portable pools? Anyone from the board wishing to comment?
It's probably a little pool, but you can just play it right, I don't think we should bother you with that.
It's just a, you know.
Let it happen.
It is, really is just a, another example of a common sense law that we're just putting on the books. So I want to thank Mike Pinella, your South Cali, and Chris Burke from the planning board for kind of working in unison to get this done. So, can I have a motion in a second to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Sorry. CJ, the motion is a second, all in favor? All right. Can I have a motion in a second to declare a negative?
I'm good, that works.
Motion. Motion by Tara, second advised, Vic, all in favor? All right. Next. Can I please now have a motion in a second to adopt local law eight of twenty twenty-three entitled, zoning portable pools, and direct the Village Cur to print a copy of the law and then into this meeting? Just wait for the twenty-second.
Motion.
Second, I'll second it. Uh, Village Cur, what name local?
Justice Brown.
Aye.
Justice Brown.
Aye.
Justice Brown. Um, Justice here, may I, you.
Yes, aye. And that's all, okay. Okay, we can report this, okay, okay. All right, public comment on agenda items only, so now is your chance to speak on anything on the agenda at the back of the room. And I just want to say, for the record, if you haven't noticed, a little bot, the scan code here, that our village is hard, put together so ecstatically, we've, we've come into the twenty-first century. All right, anyone in the public wishing to speak on anything on the agenda? Yes. And I. Only once.
Everyone's getting, talking.
Yes, no?
No, yes, go ahead.
We wanted to check on the right time to do it. John Petrusini, the engineer of the HAMOSPIC application. Uh, we have submitted a bit of documentation on our water usage. It's our understanding that the current waivers are permitted for uses which increase water less than two hundred gallons per day. So we're just requesting the public hearing be waived, as we have shown we're below that threshold.
Actually, it's a little bit more complicated than that, John asked.
He's the engineer, he's.
No, 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 he, he, he approached it from the engineering perspective, I have to approach it from the legal perspective. This board adopted a resolution.
I don't know who you are.
Joseph Paspel, H A S P E L.
I don't type that fast. H A S.
As in Sam, he has a Peter, E L. And, uh, I'm wearing two hats, I represent both the seller of this property, and I'm standing here for Jay Myrow, who represents the HAMOSPIC, the applicant. Excuse me?
The legal representative?
Yes. And I'm a little under the weather, so I, I ask you to excuse my voice and voice and my calls. The resolution adopted most recent allows for exemptions. And my understanding of the word exemption, this is why it's a legal issue rather than a, uh, engineering issue, is an exemption is not a waiver. It's my understanding that the board requires a public hearing for a waiver. But since we're in the category of exemption, if we fit into a certain definition, it is at least my view, hence my request, that the requirement for a public hearing, uh, be suspended because we fit the, uh, the definition of the exemption. And so long as you confirm the fitting of the exemption, we would ask you for it immediately. Because we've gone through a year and a half, uh, before the planning board, uh, to get to the point that they're ready to give special use, uh, application. My client, the seller, has a contingency that he can't sell this property until the special use permit is issued. So at this point in time, my client has gone through all the requirements of planning, including, uh, environmental remediation, putting in a hydrant, has spent an enormous amount of money to his detriment. And also, it has exposed him to a foreclosure proceeding, and our time is running out. And as a result of that, since we're talking about exemption, we have provided all of the data necessary to show the board that we've, uh, meet the exemption, we're to ask that the court, the, uh, board take action. Yes, I'm usually in court.
Kelly.
So Mr. Hassel did make this argument before the planning board, and I would give you the same response that I gave him that evening. It is legal exemption, to be fair, and I said this then, I could have labeled it as a gamble. It didn't matter, to give credence to the last sentence of that exemption provision, that makes it come before you, and you have the opportunity to then waive the public hearing and waive the waiver. You don't have to, it is not automatic. And the information that we have received from H two M as well, states that right now, they have not demonstrated that they meet that exemption that they're looking for. So they can proceed before you with a public hearing under this exemption and under your general ownership waiver. Should they not comply with this, I would say, it's a nineteen, a public hearing, but.
I didn't, what I said didn't, did not disagree with Kelly, I'm not saying that you, uh, uh, have to or cannot, you have the discretion to forego the public hearing. I think Kelly just said that you have that discretion, I'm asking you to exercise that discretion.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Anyone on the board wishing to speak?
Yeah, we're out of the board on this stage, too, I'm not looking to issue anything. Uh, I'm not looking quickly through the calculations, I'm not in agreement with them either. So I would like to talk to.
I need your words.
Okay. I would like to talk to H two M and Natalie before we agree on anything, because I'm not in agreement with the calculations in the letter either. Um, they're sort of cherry picked, in my opinion, of the way they're presented, and I would like to have them better for. And I got to be honest with, with the, the way that the agenda we have this, this evening, um, the incentive, which the only thing I wanted to do in the application that I have scheduled for two weeks from now. So I don't think that that's too much of a hardship for two weeks.
I think we'll survive two weeks, but every, every day is counting, this one.
I, I haven't scheduled, I, later on in the meeting, it is scheduled, we are scheduling for June eight. So that is quickly as we can get to this. So that is quickly as we can get to this.
And we agree with that.
Okay. I'm good. Anyone else on the board wishing to speak on this? All right. Anything else, public comment on a gender items only? All right. Misstrated business, the seconds of minutes. Can I have motion in a second to accept the received minutes in the meeting held on May eleven, twenty-twenty-three?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, village clerk, copy and please read abstract from the...
Abstract twenty-two, page twenty-two, twenty-three, order twenty-two, one order, eighteen. You all just step outside, please. Thank you. And total six hundred twenty-five thousand, two hundred thirty-seven dollars and sixty cents. We have to go to the car.
Trucking, seriously?
A little too much, yeah.
So we're poking those a little. Yeah, all right, can I have motion in a second to approve abstract twenty-two as well?
Motion. Second.
Hey, that's perfect.
All in favor?
Aye.
John Moore.
I appreciate it.
Interim appointing to the planning board. So since the planning board needs to ride to the village board's reorganization meeting on June eight, can I now have motion in a second to appoint Chris Irber as interim chairperson of the planning board?
Motion.
And who's the second? Yes, second, yes. All in favor?
Aye, abstaining.
Abstaining. All right, can I have motion in a second now to appoint Deborah Cornberg to the Village Woodbury Climate Smart Tax Office? Ooh. Uh, Corn.
Yeah.
With a K, Berg.
Yeah. M-E-Y, or K-F-U? Seattle.
There you go.
Okay.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Me opposed? All right, fire moment equipment request. Can I have motion in a second to approve fire prominent equipment request sixteen of twenty-twenty-three, totaling approximately a hundred and forty-nine dollars and sixty cents for the purchase of badges?
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, I think part of the meeting where we get to authorize me, the mayor, to sign this down. So can I have motion in a second to authorize me, the mayor, to sign the prevented maintenance agreement with precision roofings for the roof at Village Hall at a cost of two thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars?
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, home rule request, hotel multi-opency tax. Village clerk, pop in and please read the resolution.
Yes, it's the same resolution before, we just added a these tax, all both numbers, because they have a reduced, uh, period on the one block. So resolve, border trustees authorize me, the village clerk, to write this resolution together with any other necessary application we don't have in the state we're signed up for with, which would enable the village to impose a hotel multi-tax of one, two, five percent.
Motion. Second.
Hey.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second.
And, um, yeah, isn't that amazing? Like Creston or Nastro Donnas. And on behalf of the village board, I would like to thank our state senator and our sentiment, our sentiment critiqueists for pushing this forward. All right, uh, policy renewal, workers' compensation term. I have motion in a second to approve the renewal of the workers' compensation policy with term for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four fiscal year at a total cost of a hundred and fifty-five thousand, five hundred and nineteen dollars and zero cents.
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And not to be outdone, our liability insurance for Niner, I have motion in a second to authorize me, the mayor, to sign the policy renewal, the liability insurance for Niner, with our agent Washington Sterling for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four fiscal year at a total cost of a hundred and eighty dollars, a hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and seventy-one dollars and thirty cents.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, speaking of which, schedule a public hearing in a more timely manner. I have motion in a second to schedule a public hearing to be held at seven-thirty P.M. On June twenty-three, to entertain public comments on an application received requesting relief from local law five of twenty-twenty-two for a property located in eight Laurel Lake.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, introductory local law twelve of twenty-twenty-three. Can I have motion in a second to introduce local, introductory local law twelve of twenty-twenty-three and then three-ten of the zoning code to clarify transience requirements for hotels?
Transient.
There you go.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have motion in a second for the village board trustees to serve as lead agency and type this action. It's a type-one action on the super.
Motion. Second.
Sue and Tara, all in favor?
Aye.
And motion in a second to refer introductory local law twelve of twenty-twenty-three to the Orange County Planning Board, the planning board and the building inspector for comments.
Motion, second.
There, fifth second. All in favor?
Aye.
And finally, can I have motion in a second to schedule, here you go CJ, a public hearing to be held on June twenty-second to entertain public comment introductory local law twelve of twenty-twenty-three?
Is that five public hearings?
We are, we, Pejama and I, it is that.
Motion.
I don't care what CJ says.
All.
Motion?
I did motion, sue second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that ends, oh, okay. Okay. All right, can I have a motion in a second? This is an additional item. Can I have a motion in a second to reschedule the public hearing on introductory local law eleven taxation from June eighth to July thirteenth?
Motion.
Grab a second.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye, as long as it's the twenty-second, I'm good.
Yeah, he said, not too bad.
Need it worked, okay.
All right, now we go out to public comment. Going once, anyone in the public wishing to speak?
Jimmy Dave? I apologize, I know it's late, I know you're almost going home.
No.
Jimmy, you know if you came, if you came to Main Street, I'd have to shut it down. It's hard. Um, okay, you know the migrant issue in New York City, okay? I know, um, um, you had a lot of migrants sent to New York, right? I, I buy forth the Red Day Bar, and there's all these state emergencies on it, okay? I'm across issues with the short-term rental. None of us want to see transits, none of us see people that we don't know. I'm not talking about charity. I contribute here, I donate here, and I'm sure everyone else does too. This is not a charitable issue, this is just a simple issue of safety. What happens if the courts rule against these state emergencies? Where does this board stand?
Let me, let me, I'll stop you right there, because that was the local law we just introduced.
Okay.
So last week, uh, the county legislated, the county exec, Steve Manaus, he was, held a conference call with various mayors and supervisors throughout Orange County, where he went over the actions they have taken, the counties taken to combat what the mayor of New York City was doing by sending up the migrants up into our area. One of the suggestions that, um, their attorney made, who happened to be our attorney for many, many reasons, uh, he is of course not as good as Kelly Norton, but it's okay, uh, with all. So was to review your code as pertains to hotels. And that's exactly what we did.
And it came up with the short-term rentals as well, so we wanted to link them together, the short, because what the code says right now is transient, and transient, and that's not defined anywhere. But when you look at the short-term rental, it really is what it talks about, the month, the month leases. So based on that, taking a look at the, the hotel laws and what we have, seeing what's going on, I say we, sorry, board, we, let them know. Um, took a look at that and wanted to make sure that, like you said, that they're on the same page. We want things to match, and people not to be confused between hotels and short-term rentals, things like that, and to define what transientity was. And that was thirty days, thirty days, thirty one. I don't remember trying to...
Thirty one. Thirty one.
Okay. So. I didn't mean to interrupt, please keep going.
No, that was perfect.
You know, I, I come from Fresh Meadows, Queens, and there were three large hotels, they had ones to Wyndham, ones to Mary Fairfield. And what happened is during COVID, city started putting like recent release people, um, homeless in those hotels. And the neighborhood changed, okay? It was not, okay, they were sitting nicely in their room, watching, you know, TV and everything else. The neighborhood declined. If you, I, go to city, go to city and you'll see every other residential has somebody living there. She scared the daylights out of me when she was feeding off the hotels in Zare, nine hundred rooms. That means she could take nine hundred families. I mean, this...
They're not built yet.
Oh, okay.
Or, or even approved. There's only one that's been approved. In addition, there's the Houston Inn and the American.
American dodging in on Route thirty-two in the town avenues.
The courtyard has been approved on the shop that we're very, across from we're very far from the others.
Okay, so we don't have that many.
No.
Oh, built rooms.
Not even approved, the applications have moved.
But it's just, it's, it's scary thought because, you know what? They're coming. It, it, it's a problem that we can't, you know, we already have enough issues trying to maintain the free pantries and all these other things for the people that live here. Now they want to just throw in a bunch of people that need the assistance that we didn't volunteer for. I mean, I, I mean, that's what it comes down to. Everyone wants to... Well, basically, all immigrants in this country, well, we came in different ways. And everybody who wants to scream that, you know what, you know, you're a bastard, not supporting this, you're, you're racist, whatever, you know what? When you tell me you have migrants you have living in your house, then you talk to me. I just care about the safety of my family, my home, and this village. And it doesn't seem like, you know, the hotel, I mean, the hotel owner is assuming to allow migrants because it's rentage. So even if you take a stance that, hey, you know what, we can't handle this. The owner of the hotel is arguing against you to allow it because of, you know, our sense. And again, it's, it's a, you know what, what can you do? Thank you. Thank you, Jamie.
Anyone else in the public wishing to speak? And if you're there, you gotta talk about it.
No, we, we, every, every person.
Just do it.
Bridge.
Um, everyone knows this weekend is Memorial Day weekend. I want to first of all, thank all the members of the highway department.
Speak.
It's snow?
Yes.
The salt shacks vote. They've been out there beating the street, the sidewalk, they've been weeding, they put the flags up. Even Rob has been taking my phone calls, I'm very needy, I guess, this week. And I appreciate everything that you and your heart have done for us, and they will do for this weekend. Anyone that lives along Route thirty-two, take a, and residents, take a look at it. It looks great. Put some flags out, keep your garbage cans off the sidewalk.
Don't start.
Don't start, I'm not gonna start, but if you see anything that's wrong for the weekend, let us know, call the police department, they'll find out, they'll find you. We, we're decorating, we're the vacation committee, we took care of, um, oak clove, um, that they mowed today, they planted the plants in the ground for me. The trees are red, white, and blue. The picture I take does not show the red, white, and blue. Go home tonight, you'll see they're red, white, and blue, the treetop trees. And, um, the parade starts Sunday at one o'clock. We'll be lining up on Bond Street. We've got marching band, pipe band, DJs, we have music in the gazebo, we're gonna have music in front of Jay's Deli. So if you're in the area, park your cars, walk down, come see us. And I want to thank the village board in conjunction with the town board for allowing this parade to go through. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public wishing to speak? Foreign comments, starting with Rob Lyon.
I don't have any, I'm so sorry.
It's hard competing with Kelly, she's just such a force. Just takes over the entire conversation. Mickey Phillips?
I have no comment, thank you.
Mike Pinella?
No comment tonight, thank you.
All righty. Board comments, actually, we don't have to anything.
Everybody will be voting at the senior center for primary day, as opposed to what I said previously, because the county won't change that. So if you were voting in the primary, which is Republican only, on June twenty-seventh, which is also Jessica's birthday, you vote at the senior center. Also, property tax bill, we've been up on Tuesday. Yay. Yeah, something good.
More good news.
Something good.
All right, board comments, starting at the end of the table, Mr. Graziano.
In consideration of the public hearing schedule on our...
It's nine seventeen, CJ.
I'm gonna save my comments for June twenty-second, no. All right, thank you for coming out tonight, I have nothing.
All right, Victorelli, welcome back, by the way.
Thanks.
That smell of cream juice and banyè? It's all thanks to Victorelli is back. Jessica, it is worth it to see, I mean, here all week, Jessica.
World's saving.
No, we're not.
It's just that we... We have the two thirty-year-old ladies in the middle and the rest of the, and in the end, and the rest of us are so...
Forty-eight, thank you. Twenty-seven different, twenty... Fifty-five.
I said thirty.
All right. Vic, anything?
I'm gonna talk, yeah, I've been here a while. It's quite a good event from the apple. I don't have much to say, but I hope you see everybody on Sunday, Memorial Day Parade. I plan on being there, I was like...
Yay.
Um, but also there's a fundraiser coming up, a wrestling fundraiser, we invite some humpus on Saturday, June ten. It's a good event, if you have small, like grade school kids, it's fantastic for them, so hope to see you there at St. Pat's Gym, and that's why. And not the twenty-second.
Caesar Riallo, Christine?
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Arm, June twenty-second, comply.
Oh, I was gonna wait till the next meeting, but, okay, so now, uh, so on June twenty, well, I'll go with Tuesday. Okay, June twenty-second at Par.
I won't miss it.
We're trying to promote the business, and they are promoting our kids at the high school. We'll be hosting a Broadway review. Um, a lot of the songs from Les Mis will be sang there amongst others. Most kids are preparing four to five songs. Uh, and from that will be from five to eight o'clock, and Music Boosters will be there as well. And then June tenth, Music Boosters and the kids will be at Memorial's Got Talent. And that is a great event that we attended last year, and Music Boosters will be there again, fun racing. We have great, some really great baskets, um, park tickets to various parks, water parks, UG bags, kids' bath bags, and some really nice stuff. So we hope everybody will come out and support the kids, um, from ages five to twenty-five.
I'm sorry, I didn't have any copies, go ahead.
Well, she, I was gonna, oh, it's June eighth.
Is it four?
It is, but you can make a reservation at Par online, and you can make it for patio because it, it will be outside the stadium.
Thank you.
June twenty-second, apply to either my...
June twenty-second.
Same as the...
Yes, I'll be swinging over at some, I'll be here myself.
Debbie, you made it here already.
I just wanna thank Maria and the parade committee for your work in bringing it all to fruition. Um, I'm sure it's gonna be beautiful, and I know you have been relentless, and I saw you plant things this weekend, it was Sunday, I give you so much credit. Uh, so thank you for making a beautiful parade out of our, uh, this, well, yeah, thank you.
All right. Who's there? You look great, you look something else. All right, just finally, you've all shipped, it's a Memorial Day parade journal in the back of the room. Our attorney has it, posing with it. Just each and every vendor in the book has spent their hard-earned money to advertise on Memorial Day Parade. Please consider them when you have work available. And that's all I have for this evening. There's no further business to discuss or comments received. Can I have motion in a second to adjourn this meeting?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next meeting of your village board will be June eighth, twenty-twenty-three, thank you.